Well, good evening, everyone. I was talking a little bit too much and I forgot it was 7:02. So with that, welcome to tonight's City Council meeting of September 4th, 2019. And could we please have Doug Young from Our Father's House come forward for the invocation?
Heavenly Father, as we gather in this chamber, we ask your blessings on us. We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. May we use our resources wisely and well and make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and to the future, the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As your trusted servants, we seek blessings on all our deliberations and on all our efforts here today. Bless our mayor, each member of council, and all our city staff abundantly. May you provide for all their needs, both professionally and personally. We thank you for each and every one of them. We ask all of this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the September 4th meeting of the Los Banas City Council. And Chief, where's Chief? He'll lead us into flag salute.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney?
Freya?
Here.
Johnson Santos? Jones? Louis Volalta?
Here. We do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Okay, I have to go back here just one minute. This doesn't show the, let's try it here. No? Okay, so who buzzed in first? Okay, Mr. Freya, sorry?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Freya, second by Santos. In order to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. All right. I have to think, why is this, we don't have the, yeah? Yeah? Oh. Okay, I think we, I think it just did it, Joey.
Go.
Yeah, and then it goes back to here and goes back to there. Okay, now we got it. Thank you. All right, let's go on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Please come forward.
Adam Losvenios. I received yesterday on the door, or my mother this morning, received code violations. I seen Sierra, Segarra shining a light from the neighbor's side of the alley, but not approaching any of the area at 11 o'clock at night before the paper was put on the door. I think my mom, she's being targeted. I don't think it was a misunderstanding, too. There's a 100-year-old oak tree that's falling apart in the alley. That's broken the neighbors of L Street that's in the alleyway. Both, two houses, one in front, one in back, because the tree is in the middle of their property. And I don't think that Segarra took the report correctly, as that's what the Hispanic gentleman was trying to report, because it's huge, it's probably 20 tons, and large branches are, the inside is rotting and you hear them crack and pop in the middle of the night. And a palm tree next to the property of that is also leaning over dangerously and is going to fall into public health nuisance. I just wanted to share that with you and thank you. And a lot of the codes that were given to my mom, they seemed, they weren't so much out of code. She's like a little bit targeted, I think, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level. And we will go on to item six, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows: warrant numbers 217703 through 217908 in the amount of $1,244,805.62. Minutes for the August 7th, 2019 city council meeting. Minutes for the August 21st, 2019 city council meeting. Minutes for the August 27th, 2019 adjourned city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6125, approving a tentative agreement/memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Los Banas and the Los Banas Public Employees Union Local One asks me. City Council Resolution Number 6126, amending Division 4 salary schedule employee classifications relating to changes to Section E Public Works, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? If not, do I have a motion to approve? Mrs. Santos?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Mr. Jones?
Second.
Motion by Santos, second by Jones to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item seven, Cal Vans' presentation by Georgina Cardenas, Executive Director. Welcome. She has a PowerPoint? Okay. Try that. There we go.
Our program primarily because the highest concentration in this area is primarily farm labor. I was gonna focus on that a little bit. Our vehicles aren't limited to farm labor employees. We have schools, we have government officials, we have, you know, federal, state employees in our general van pool program. So a little bit about the structure, I'm not sure if there's someone who's completely unfamiliar with our program or maybe has not seen our vehicles in the area. You guys have an employer here in town who's got about 15 of them, and these folks are traveling, you know, decent distances that they may not normally travel. So we're a public transit agency. We're formed as a JPA. We're comprised of 14 different government or regional planning agencies across the state of California. So at present, I haven't counted the 40 new vehicles we just got, but we're at about 900 vehicles throughout 17 California counties. We currently receive no local, state, or federal operating revenue, so we're basically self-funded. Majority of our revenue comes from those that are using the service. We gather and report trip data for all van pool trips, and then we, we're open to regional planning agencies that want to join our JPA. These are some of the 17 that I mentioned earlier, a couple of pages worth of that. And then so participation in Cal Vans, well, I believe it's fairly popular. You don't need credit, you don't need a credit card on reserve, folks can leave anytime. We don't have any contractual obligations of any kind dues or assessment, so, you know, it doesn't cost a person who wants to participate in the program or one of the member agencies to join. These, some of the numbers, and this is just something that I drew down from some of the data that we track, some of the larger UZAs that are part of our organization, this is some of the contributions that we return back to the local transit agencies. We don't request anything in return, and if you're part of our JPA, it's automatic that we're gonna report on your behalf. To date, when we ran these numbers at the end of fiscal year 2018, 1718, we have contributed over $40 million to these different entities. And this is just a limit, I mean, a limited amount. The report is much larger than that. So the federal revenues per reported van pool, traditionally, back in 1516 when we had 456, as you can see, we're up to nine, nine-something. We've grown substantially. Our corresponding, corresponding funding received by the transit agencies is about $9 million, 182741. We, how we generate funds is that our vehicles count $26,000 in the different counties where they travel. So that's what they can bring in based on our reporting to, to the Federal Transit Administration on the behalf of our, oops, lost your screen there, on behalf of our member agencies. So how many JPAs, I'm sorry, member agencies receive or the reinvestment of federal funds, if you will? We have some larger entities, Fresno, for instance, if they purchase a van pool, they purchase a portion of it. That vehicle will bring them back $20,000. Funds that are retained by the local transit agency are about eight grand of that. And these are all just numbers, these are UZAs, these are stick funding things that, how the different entities generate the funds that come into their local areas. Let's see here, so investment cycle, a little bit about that one. So our investments is in the creation of the van pools. We report vehicle miles traveled reductions, 2.3 million for 100 new van pools. So that, that's just a kind of estimate what 100 van pools can do and how we generate over $2 million in federal funds to participating transit agencies. I think I took this example from one of the larger areas, San Maria. You know, two years ago, we had zero visibility there, really hard to start up a van pool, and we have 154 right now, so. Some of the areas, the counties that we serve, if an employer derives or a resident derives from one of these counties, then they can travel for work. They can follow the migratory patterns for crops, harvest, things of that nature. This is kind of a statewide van pool view. And in Los Banas, we have several van pools along both corridors, I-599, and, you know, like I mentioned, about 15. So this, I think I took at like 4:30 this afternoon, so.
Did you say we have 15 vans in Los Banas that are operating?
Yeah, they travel to La Grande, they travel to Hollister, so some of them put substantial miles on it. Yeah. These are the 15 vehicles that are assigned currently to here downtown. Well, actually, it's a little bit east of here, Market Demand, one of your employers here in town, is using our vehicles, about 15. These are, these are just, just as an example, someone that travels to La Grande, 45 miles, one-hour commute each way, and this is worth it to them. The employers, for a lot of these folks, will pay 100% of the employees' cost of transportation just to make sure that the labor is there and that, you know, they don't miss work. Let's see, so vehicle miles reductions over time, every year, we started out back in 2011, about 45 million miles, we're up, we're up to 115 miles right now. So that's what we're reporting back to the federal government on behalf of all of our member agencies. Passengers for 2018, this was just some, some quick numbers. I pulled up 3,173, 823 passenger trips, driving over 11 million miles. Passenger lane miles, things that we eliminated, basically vehicles that were eliminated from the road because of our, our efforts. Folks opting to share that ride and van pool. Our reduction in greenhouse gas, 56 metric tons, and savings to riders. For example, the folks who don't have any out-of-pocket costs, we have saved collectively for all of our van pools across our agency, 77 million in 2018. So the funds that we have generated on behalf of others, 1.9 million last year. Like I mentioned, our fleet size is 900, we're already sent out the RFP. We've got another 260 that we're adding in the spring of 2020, and that is to meet our demands. So like I mentioned before, 100% recovery of operating costs, 24/7 support for the van and the driver, seven offices across California, we are federal department of labor approved for farm labor van pools, and H2A transportation, anyone that's in the, in the farm labor industry understands the H2A terminology pretty well. It's, it's, you know, we bring folks from, from across different areas to make sure that we have the labor force to pick those fruits, to work the land. And currently, 85% who use our, our van pools where there's an employer involved use an employer voucher, and so that's a benefit to the employer. Not so much, 132F allows for this, not only for health benefits, but also for transportation. But it's administratively, administratively very cumbersome, so a lot of employers opt to not go with the tax benefit. Qualifications, 25 years of age, 21, as long as you have a perfect driving record. You can use a Class C license to drive these vehicles as long as you can pass a Class B physical. Can't have more than two points on your DMV record, and you cannot have had a DOI or reckless driving in the last five years. So how we control our current fleet, our GPS is primarily for tracking miles, but, and passengers, of course. But we also monitor their speeds, locations, you can't turn on the vehicle without the ignition, without that PIN, excuse me, and to use the fuel card, you also require that PIN. All drivers are enrolled in the DMV pool notice program, and so any, any, you know, no-no's will be reported immediately. So some of the different entities that, that are, belong to part of our structure, they support their local riders as long as they are coming out of one of their counties or going to those counties to work. So some of them, Fresno, they've been around the longest, and they're up to $600 per van pool per month, so. And that comes right off the top, so whatever the bill is, that's deducted automatically. Some of, some of the correctional officers, 65 bucks a month, federal employees get two 65 per month deducted from, from their cost. And then, so the farm workers, why we pushed on that one so much is because they got, they get zero back. So they don't, they don't really qualify for any of these. Traditionally, to be able to track these, these types of subsidies, they require continuous membership by the different riders. That's really difficult in the agricultural community, if they're moving, if they're migrating. So we had to do something to help those guys out. So how the signups occur, willingness to share their ride, that's number one. A lot of people just, you know, they want their car and they don't want to share, so can't help too much there. Copy of their driver's license sent over to our office in Hanford, passing the DMV clearance, passing your Class B, that's only, of course, for a 15-passenger vehicle. If you have an eight-passenger, you don't need that. You meet with our staff to pick up your van, go through orientation, we can deliver it to your workplace, to home, or you can pick it up at our headquarters. Get in your van, you go to work, so, kind of how those work. Was that mine? No? Okay. So I won't bore you guys with these, how the payments are processed, it's essentially, you know, how, how we get paid. Some of the benefits I kind of already mentioned, safer transportation options for local growers, labor contractors. And you can visit our website if you have any more info.
So we have thousands of commuters in Los Banas. And so a person, if they're all going to the same maybe employment or nearby, they could get like an eight-passenger van?
Yes, or 15.
Or 15?
Yep.
Okay, and out-of-pocket costs or nothing?
That depends on who they work for. If an employer is willing to subsidize that cost, they will pay 100% of the vehicle, 50%, it depends on what, what they negotiate. It's a negotiating game, it's about benefits.
Mm-hmm.
The most.
Okay. And does the driver get paid?
They do not, they're volunteer drivers.
They're volunteer because they, they're going to work anyway?
Correct.
Okay.
They would have been, been there anyways, though, and that's the only way it would fly with the highway patrol. So that's the agreement that we have, or, and Department of Labor as well. Department of Labor is a little bit different, because if you're behind the wheel with the intent of picking folks up to go to work, you're, you're working on behalf of the employer, therefore, yes, you will get paid for your, for your commute, yeah.
Okay. Questions from, from Mrs. Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, of the 15 vans that are leaving Los Banas, do you know where they're going to?
Primarily La Grande, some of them travel further to Hollister, Gilroy.
Is there a particular industry that they're going?
It's, it's all agriculture.
It's all agriculture, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if someone wanted to, to get one of these vans, obviously contact the office, and, and so then you'd have to talk to the employer, is that correct?
Not always.
Not always?
If, if the employer caused that van pool to form, then yes, we will. However, folks come to us voluntarily, for the most part.
But if folks want to come voluntarily, they can automatically get a van even though there's no cost share with the employer?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yes, they'd be paying 100% of it, minus any subsidies that we can qualify them for, so, yeah.
Okay.
As long as they meet our criteria, the behind-the-wheel criteria.
So they would meet, so they would pay 100% of the van?
Yes.
Or minus any subsidies, then could they charge the riders?
They cannot, we're a transit agency, we, we provide, we provide them the mechanism to charge, so we establish the fare that is sent off to their, it's the onboard data, it's a Garmin essentially, that is, but also on our website, for complete transparency, we, transparency, I apologize. We have a spot in there where you can type in your vehicle, and it'll pop up the bills for the last six weeks. That way riders always know what the cost really was. And there can't be any, you know, any question about overcharging the folks in vehicles. We're really big on that, don't want any, anyone being taken advantage of in that respect.
Okay. So I'm just trying to get a picture of, you know, of how someone could benefit if the employer didn't, if the employer didn't contribute, and they wanted to do that. So, so, but the driver would have to, or the person who, who has the van then would bear the full cost of driving back and forth?
They are the responsible party.
Yes.
They, but because they don't pay any out-of-pocket, that's the idea, they do a lot of in-kind, they have to fuel it up, wash it, keep it safe. They, we will divide up amongst their riders the entire cost.
Okay.
So he's responsible for, or she is responsible for turning that over to us, making payment. But they collect it from the riders.
Oh, they collect it from?
Yeah, we have some really creative folks, I mean, we have some folks that needed it for school, for instance, colleges, they don't provide transportation out to some really remote adult education locations. Some of them would have bake sales, some of them would have book drives, you know, we've got a lot of creative folks, they don't want to lose their, their means of transportation. And, and because we tend to serve areas where, you know, traditional transit doesn't go up in the mountains and the fields, you know, you name it, if you have a place to go to work, we will probably accommodate that.
And, and did I hear that these are hybrid vans, too?
These are hybrid vans, I mean, we've got the, the standard diesel, we have, you know, some Mercedes-Benzes for some of the folks because they just have a lot of headroom, and they prefer that, we have, a lot of our correctional officers are pretty tall and, you know, burly, so they, they just wanted more room, so we got some of those. Didn't quite work out with those, we had them for a couple of years, they're very expensive to run and to maintain, things break on them, it's primarily GMCs and Ford Transits. Those are a larger vehicle, yeah, but yes, they are, the hybrids are XL hybrids. So it's, it's what's approved by CARB at this point, until we get an all-electric vehicle. Our, our mission would be to become zero emission eventually.
Okay, so what are some ways that we can promote this, or how can we, I mean, for the commuters that are out there, and I'm sure there are commuters How can we, I mean, for the commuters that are out there, and I'm sure there are commuters with Vampools Vampools and people that have commuter pools right now, that probably don't know about this program? And what can we do to help? To get the word out? I mean, is there?
So we have, we've had an event here recently. It was pretty well, you know, visited, so we had a lot of folks. We tend to expand by word of mouth. The traction doesn't occur artificially, it tends to happen organically in the different locations where we visit. And it's word of mouth, it's one person telling the other, this was my experience, you know, give them a call. As much money as we've spent on marketing the official way, you know, radio, media of any kind, print, it's not been as effective as the other means. And we tend to be better prepared as the growth occurs. If we grow too quickly, you know, it can get out of hand pretty easily, so.
So all of us have Facebook pages with a number of people. Do you have a one-sheet PDF that you could send the city clerk or the city manager and that we could post on our pages?
Yeah, absolutely.
And that describes kind of in brief? So people could just look at a glance to see if they want to do something like this?
Sure. Drive something up.
All right. So if you could send us that, that would be great.
Okay, I'd love to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions, anyone else? Well, thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
Please come back and give us updates.
Absolutely.
Because this is really important to reduce emissions.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to item eight, Buxton presentation by Cheyenne Robinson, account executive, and Lisa McKay, senior vice president.
Members of the council, staff and community, good evening. I'm Lisa McKay, I'm the senior vice president for the community ID division of the Buxton company. I've been with the company almost fourteen years. And we have been fortunate enough to call you a client for the last three years. So tonight, I want to kind of take it back, we're at the end of our contractual obligation to you. And we are talking a little with your staff about where do we go from here. So for the benefit of the community, for the benefit of those of you that are new, I'm going to kind of take it back to the very beginning and talk a little bit about who we are. If you wouldn't mind just bringing that. Thank you. So Buxton has been in business for more than thirty years. Our core business is in the retail world. So we are considered the industry leader in consumer analytics and site selection. Essentially, what that means to you is we currently work with over four thousand retail restaurant and hotels. Trader Joe's, California Pizza Kitchen, In-N-Out Burger, Costco, Big Box, Small Footprint, you name it. And what we do for those clients is we help them to make strategic location decisions in the heart of their look-alike customers. We also help them understand marketing decisions, so how do I message my customer through the right media channel? How do I make merchandise intelligence decisions? So how do I stock my store location in Southern California? And how should that differ, because the customer's different in Northern California? So that's really our core business and has been for over thirty years. We're also in the healthcare industry, a lot of people don't know that about us, but we've been in the healthcare industry for more than ten years. It's become very synergistic with the retail world. We're seeing a lot of our healthcare providers decide to be in shopping centers, in full old regional mall opportunities, emergency care, diagnostic clinic. So we have been in that space for some time, and we have been in the public sector space for a little more than fifteen years. We realize that we have a very unique insight into how a retailer selects a site. And essentially, what you as a community need to know about yourself to compel a retailer to make a decision. Unfortunately, Mayor, just picking up the phone and saying we'd love to have Trader Joe's is not that compelling to Trader Joe's. So we work with our communities to really help them understand specific retail concepts that fit the market trade area, that fit within that competitive analysis, that doesn't, that isn't going to compete with their own stores, much less have an oversaturation of any one thing. We look at your look-alike customers, we look at retailers that are currently opening store locations in California in the next twenty-four to thirty-six months. And we look at where their existing locations are, and whether or not they have locations in markets similar to your market, and how those stores currently perform. It's very competitive, and I show you this slide to say, last year alone, we evaluated eighty thousand sites, and seventy-five hundred of those became a store. What that means to you as a community is they're evaluating multiple opportunities, and they're selecting one today. The world of retail is changing, as we all know, shrinking average store footprints, more omnichannel retail, they're opening fewer stores. So we know how competitive it is for you as a community, and we know how important it is for you to be very proactive in this market. I have been the California rep for the length of my career at Buxton, and so we are proud to say we have more than three hundred client cities here. We've also assisted over forty-five million square feet of retail, which is about six billion in increased annual sales tax. So I do want to kind of dive into what we've been able to do for you in the last three years. And then kind of take it back to some of the things that, yes, we've been able to profile your residents, we've been able to profile your daytime population. In this three years, we understand that there are many visitors in this community. We've evaluated some of your, like your Starbucks, for example, and discovered that you have about a ninety-minute drive time, which is very unusual. Most developers, brokers or retailers will not look more than that kind of fifteen-minute traditional drive time when they're making site selection decisions. But because we have a new ability to profile your visitors, anybody that does not work or live here, we are looking to potentially, as a move-forward strategy, look at who those people are and how they add to your overall economic, how they impact your overall economic development strategy. So I'm going to turn it over to Cheyenne. She's been your account rep for the length of that three years, and she's going to talk a little bit about what we've done so far.
And just to be clear, I asked for In-N-Out Burger, not the other place.
So as Lisa mentioned, we've leveraged the past three years, our expertise, working directly with retailers, and knowing how they operate and how they're looking and seeking sites. So what we've done is each year, we've evaluated your retail trade area, and one of the best-fit retailers to pursue proactively to come in and locate in Los Banos. And we've had a number of those companies actually locating your community and several in the works, which I'll share with you here shortly. So the first step is understanding what is your retail trade area. As Lisa mentioned, retailers are looking at a primary trade area, a smaller area than what your full overall capture will be. And your community overall, twenty minutes is about the average for what retailers would be looking for. Now, that is going to vary depending on the retail type. If you're looking at a larger sporting goods retailer, you could be looking at an hour drive time for, for instance. Here, you're seeing what twenty minutes looks like around your community, some key demographic characteristics, and a psychographic profile. Now, we could look at over seventy-one different consumer types. What this chart tells us, I know it's hard to see here from looking at the codes, but when we dive into all the information that we have behind this graph, we know that some of the top prevalent consumers that you have here in your market are a mix of active families. You also have households that love to go to theme parks. You have consumers that are very attractive when you're looking at clothing retailers, as well as a mix of seniors that are very involved in religious and local groups, and spend a lot of time reading and gardening. Now, that's just a couple of the most prevalent consumer types, as I mentioned, we looked at over seventy-one. And of all the characteristics in your trade area, what are the companies that are operating in markets most similar to yours? It's what we've looked at every single year. What are those top companies to pursue? We've provided you that list of retailers along with the validation. As you heard earlier, it's not just calling a retailer and saying we'd love to have you here. Well, what does it mean to them? What is the value of having a location in Los Banos? So we've helped you put that story together by knowing how a retailer looks at the market. What are the most comparable stores that they have opened in the market? Not just based on demographics, but based on how your consumers live their lives and spend their dollars. And knowing that those retailers like to operate, because the consumers that you have here are more likely to spend their dollars in a store in your city. So your community, not only Stacy, but as well as Mayor, City Manager as well, attending the ICSC conferences each year, leveraging our data, having these meetings with the retailers, starting at the first conference, which was in 2017. And then working on that list to have a number of companies open up today. So we've Ross, Dress for Less, Boot Barn. And coming soon tomorrow at eight AM, a grand opening for Marshall's. So we're really excited about them coming in into the community. Really showing the viability that you have in your market with the continuous growth in the retailers that are coming in. Deli Delicious was another one that was on our retail list. Which, we've seen the volumes of Starbucks, and so I'm sure that many of you have probably been there and seen the opening soon sign. We're excited to have them come into the market. Having a deli is really a, having some more deli options is really a gap in the area, more of those casual dining options, which is what we're continuing to work on and filling that gap as well. There are two planned companies, which we're not able to announce those names, but when we do, you all I know will be very excited to hear healthier, fast casual concept looking to come in. That was one that Los Banos team actually met with at ICSC in 2017. They were looking to come in at the end of last year, something happened, it didn't work out. And in our ongoing conversations, recommend it, well, let's see if we can get back engaged with them and get them interested again. They are interested to come in, and it looks like they're going to be coming in and testing out a new prototype as well. So that'll be really exciting. The quick-serve restaurant that's looking to come in, that's very close and finalizing negotiations right now, it's actually one that doesn't have a location in your nearby neighboring towns. They've got a location in Fresno and Stockton, but nowhere surrounding your area. And they've selected your community as the next place that they want to be. So very soon, we'll have some more announcements for you, multiple LOIs and lease negotiations that are taking place currently. But also, we're not only working on attracting retail, but also empowering city staff and other development needs and objectives, as well as your brokerage and development community. Actually had a call not that long ago with a developer here in your community that's looking at bringing in more office space. Now, as you all are aware, retail is our specialty. But because we have a wealth of data, we're always more than happy to help in other areas if possible. So I'm actually working with that developer and providing them with reports that will help them in their goals in recruiting more office tenants into your city. And we're also here to provide ongoing support, which we have and will continue to do. So it's not only providing you with that market intelligence and the support, that you're able to recruit the retail that you have using our analytics, but also in providing that ongoing guidance and making sure that we're on track to continue to have the growth and continue the momentum that we've had to date. Now, through our partnership, we have identified that there is an area that you're currently not able to speak to in those conversations with retailers, and that's really that added area. Just as you mentioned, retailers looking at a primary trade area that's close to your market. But what is that additional population base and commuter population that you have in your area? That's something that we're going to work on with you all with a new database and our new capability that we have using mobile GPS, which Lisa will speak to a little bit more as to what those next steps look like.
So no action today, obviously. We're going to be submitting a new proposal to your group to evaluate this new mobile technology. So again, when we started three years ago, we did not have this in-house. What we do have is credit card data. We've always had credit card data, we've always had the ability to capture that. However, it did not lend itself necessarily to cash-based purchases or to event coordination or anyone that was in the community that wasn't necessarily spending with a specific credit card. So while we do still have credit card data, and that will be incorporated into your new strategy, should you choose to move that direction, we're able now to capture mobile device data, and this has been in-house for about two years. So anytime your GPS is not set to privacy, we're able to ping your cell phone, which I know sounds very big brother, and it is. But the reality is, our retail partners are using this data to make multimillion-dollar real estate decisions. So we've brought that in-house, and we're able to geo-locate that trip. So anytime you make a trip that lasts longer than three minutes, anytime you stop anywhere in the community, it creates a trip record for us. We're able to take that information, and that pings back to your address level. So your address level then gives us the ability to open up your household file and look at your psychographic profile. So who you are in terms of how you live your life, how you spend your money, your lifestyle characteristics. So no matter where you live relative to this market, we would be able to capture that, and that gives us the ability to say who, where, value. Who are you, where are you coming from, what is your overall value? We're also able to, and this is something that I think has been important in California, we're able to separate up to seven people under one roof. Because what we have seen, because of the expense and cost of living of California, is that not everyone is a head of household. There may be multiple heads of household inside, under one roof. So that capability is very important. Now, again, before you freak out, we are not necessarily looking at you, Mayor, and your name. We de-identify the data by using the market segmentation system that Cheyenne was talking about. So we're able to understand your who, where, value without actually backing into your actual purchase.
You're not going to tell my doctor how much ice cream I eat then, huh?
Right.
All right.
We do protect the privacy of those folks that are shopping and dining. And again, to a retailer, we just want to answer the question of so what? And their question mark is, do I have enough core look-alike customers in this market to warrant an overperforming store? And that's really what we're looking at, and that's the point of being data-oriented in your strategy, is to be able to really define, and not say anecdotally, we think maybe this is a possibility for us. But to be able to go to a retailer and say, we have a site at one-two-three Main Street, we have a motivated seller, we also know that you're opening store locations in California in the next thirty-six months. We know you currently have fifteen locations on the ground already in a market similar. We know that we can offer you a look-alike customer, and now we have the ability through mobile technology to layer in this cyclical population of people that, they're not currently being quantified in your existing platform in our partnership with you. So we're going to be able to quantify another layer of data. And anecdotally, you already know that you are getting a ton of commuter sort of traffic, and who are those people? And like I said, a visitor may not be necessarily someone coming from China, it may be someone coming from a neighboring community. But if they don't live here and they don't work here, they're what we call a visitor. And we're now going to have a feel for who those people are, who those key segments are. So this was your Starbucks location. These are the key market segments in and around that store, and we were baffled. I've never seen numbers like this for a Starbucks coming from this far away. Typically, this would be like a Bass Pro location, or a Cabell, or some kind of destination retail. But we feel it's due to a lot of that pass-through traffic, but also people that are working elsewhere, that are living here, or vice versa. And so these numbers are good, and this is what we missed in the initial partnership. We were not able to quantify outside of that twenty-minute drive time. So being able to do that is going to be really valuable to your story. So in conclusion, again, no action. We want to first thank you for the last three years. And we'll be submitting something that helps us to kind of understand your needs going forward, and hopefully see you again in the next three. Questions?
So that would explain why we're working on our third Starbucks.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we were in Starbucks today, and it's pretty, there was a lot of traffic. Yeah.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Well, we already have three Starbucks ones inside a Target.
Right.
So.
That's right, so we're four.
Yeah. Well, one of the things I'd like to say with the opening of Marshall's is that I hope at some point you can work to bring a Home Goods with them, because that's an important component, I think, of the shopping experience of that organization. At this particular time, I heard you say earlier that you work with Costco. What is their immediate demographics as far as population numbers to be able to consider an area?
So Costco, they look at a lot of the same criteria. So it's not just population density, it's obviously they'll look at their existing locations, whether or not they're going to cannibalize on their own store, which they won't do. So drive time, the traffic counts, their preferences in terms of co-tenancy, adjacencies, whether or not you have, you know, visibility, accessibility, you know, your design standards. There's a lot of things that go into any retailer's decision process, especially one that's going to spend as much money and have the gravity that a Costco would bring with it, so you're talking about Home Goods. We look at co-tenant mix also. So if you were to secure an anchor tenant like that, then we would automatically look at, okay, what are the obvious co-tenants that would have a natural grouping around a Costco and that already succeed in that environment? So there's a lot of things that go into that. It's not any one thing, because they don't necessarily do the same thing over and over again. They obviously are not pioneers, they want to know if we ever done this before successfully. So we'll just look at their comparable locations and be able So we'll just look at their comparable locations and be able to tell them, this is something you've done before, it's something that you've done successfully, it makes sense in terms of your overhead and your operating cost versus the number of customers and their value to you.
Because I would have to say, I'm sure there are a lot of people who work in the Bay Area, may stop at a Costco there, shop and bring it home, rather than traveling to Merced or Turlock or Gilroy, once they're here.
And any highly sought-after retailer like that, you're going to have to work a little bit harder in terms of that courtship and you may have to talk in an incentive at some point in time. It just depends on what they're looking for.
Also, with the retailers that you work with, I'm not sure if all of them need a large footprint for capital. But do you ever work with any retailers that may want to locate in your downtown area? Because we do have a small downtown that's thriving.
Well, and typically your downtown environments, you'll have an opportunity for more small footprint, not necessarily national, but regional and unique type concepts traditionally gravitate more toward the downtown. So we can look at only that, if you want to look at concepts that have less than 10 locations in California only. And that might be a great fit for your downtown environment.
Okay. I think those are the questions I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Lewis, or Mrs. Johnson?
Thank you. And Santos? And I want to say thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Wonderful breakdown of everything with the cell phone. I know that something's been happening, but it's kind of interesting to see the numbers. I don't know if you are able to let us know if there's been any, have you been getting notice from any larger industry? I know you deal more in retail, which is, like you said, a large, big box, small print. But have we, would you happen to know if we've been getting that type of notice?
We have workforce data, we have average commute time data, we don't specialize in industrial. I know we're looking into some numbers for you. I don't know, I'm trying to think of our source for that. Is it EMSI? I believe our source for EMSI, which gives us business quotients and labor and statistic data, they don't necessarily duplicate the wheel in the same way. So we could say, for example, you know, a shortage in aircraft engine and parts, but that doesn't necessarily mean you should go talk to Boeing tomorrow or any, you know, do you understand what I mean? So we can tell you perhaps gaps in your market on the industrial or manufacturing side and then perhaps pull a list down of businesses that are already in the California market. Healthcare, we can go much, take a much deeper dive, because we work with healthcare providers. We don't currently work with anyone in the industrial manufacturing industry. So we do have labor statistic data, but it's not as detailed.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Mr. Freya?
Thank you for the fine work. People have been talking, talking, talking for years, but it was when we contracted with you that we started seeing concrete results.
Thank you.
And it's just been spectacular and we're very pleased with that.
Thank you.
And you mentioned healthcare. We definitely have a shortage of that around here too. So we can, I'm sure you're working on that as well. And I'd like to see you working on that.
Okay.
So thank you very, very much for great work.
Thank you.
That Ross blew everybody away. Nobody, it blew everybody away. Everybody in the Ross industry, everybody I've talked to, whoever worked with the place, we've never seen an opening like that. I imagine Marshalls would be kind of big too.
Yeah.
Very nice. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, one of the, one of the things that we did learn as we go to the ICSC conferences is that, and I'm sure everybody on this council gets a request for a certain store that they want brought to town. Well, a lot of these stores are franchises and they're selling the franchise. And these stores will come to town, these restaurants will come to town if they have someone who's going to, again, buy the franchise. And those are anywhere from 60 to 80 to $100,000 just to buy the rights. And then the building to open after you get a building, it's going to cost you another half million to 600,000 just to open the business. So by saying that, why doesn't someone come here to Las Bannas, you know, you council are not working hard enough to bring these businesses? Well, as a council, we are working hard enough to bring these businesses. It's just that some of these businesses require so much capital, they're not going to hand over a franchise unless they feel that there's going to be success and someone has the capital to back that franchise. So it's not just making a request, it's finding an individual like Jimmy John's Barbecue, they sell a franchise. In-N-Out Burger is corporate-owned, so they don't sell a franchise. Dunkin' Donuts, I get that request all the time. And it costs anywhere from 500 to 600,000 to open that store. So someone has to have the capital and they have to look at their market share and that's where Buxton comes in to help them determine whether they're going to be a success in this community or not. So thank you for the work that you do. We have seen the benefits and I personally would like to continue. So we'll bring this forward. I know there's no decision tonight, but we thank you for taking the time to come here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Is there any other questions, please, ladies? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's go on to Item 9, Groundwater Sustainability Plan, GSP update. And CCID General Manager Chris is here tonight. And Jared Martin, right? Correct? Okay. Fantastic. So I'm going to go to Director Fache, or City Public Works Engineer Fache for the introduction.
That, that.
Director, yeah.
No.
We'll get there.
That's me, thank you.
Yeah, Public Works Director.
Just say Mark, that's okay. No, actually tonight Jared Martin will be presenting this. He is the new appointed CCID General Manager. Congratulations, Jared. It's well-deserved, you're a very impressive young man. And Chris is here for support tonight, I think. Thank you, Chris. But what we're going to do tonight, this is the next step along the process. The draft GSP, the Groundwater Sustainability Plan that we belong to is ready. And what Jared will do is go over the, a little bit on the executive summary and a little bit on the section that pertains to the City of Las Bannas. In the next month or so, the whole report will be online. There will be a link put on our website that you can go and visit it and research it and do all that, because there's a 90-day review period. It's quite a document to research. We'll be coming back on December 4th with almost the same exact staff report for an approval of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan as the City of Las Bannas GSA. You will be doing that. And it's basically what, exactly what we're presenting tonight. We'll ask for approval of that plan, especially how it pertains to Las Bannas. So that's about December 4th. So in that time, there'll be, there'll be time to review the document if you wish to, or anyone wishes to, it'll be online. I'll let Alex know when that becomes online and maybe in one of his weekly reports, he can let you know the link, how to get there and study it. But now I'd like to introduce Jared, who is the author of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff. Thank you for having me here. My name is Jared Martin. I am the new General Manager for Central California Irrigation District and it's been a true pleasure working with Mark and your staff on getting this GSP drafted and put in place.
Do we need to, okay? Try that.
So a few years back, CCID met with the city to talk about this new 2014-passed set of bills known as the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. You guys are familiar with that. Ms. Lewis, I've seen you at a couple of our workshops, thank you for attending those. And we're now at a point where we can quit talking about the agency and we can talk about the plan. And so I'll give a brief refresher on kind of where we're at, where we've been in our area and then where we're at for all of our partners, the City of Las Bannas being one of them, and then what does it mean for the City of Las Bannas going forward. So in the Deltamendota Sub Basin, that's the area from Tracy down to Tranquility and from the San Joaquin River over to the foothills. So it's a huge area, 120 miles long, and in there, there's 23 different groundwater sustainability agencies or GSAs. The City of Las Bannas is one of them, Exchange Contractors are another one of them, working on developing six different plans. So a lot of effort's been going in to try to coordinate, how do these plans work together? How do they speak the same language? So what you see on this chart is just kind of the dynamics of that big coordination effort. In the Exchange Contractors' plan, we have several partners, you know, first and foremost, City of Las Bannas, but we've also partnered with the cities of Newman, Gustine, Dos Palos, Firebomb, Mendota, to get this plan put together. And in addition to that, we're working with some non-districted lands, some areas between CCID and the cities, partnering with the counties of Madera, Merced and Fresno. So this is the area that, of study for the Las Bannas area. Historically, CCID and the City of Las Bannas have worked together on joint groundwater investigations through the hydrogeologist Ken Schmidt. This map is a rendition and an extension of, if you remember the 2010 report where we worked with the Bureau of Reclamation to analyze the groundwater characteristics going on in that Las Bannas Creek aquifer. So that bold outline area is that same study area that we talked about almost 10 years ago. Really put the city and this whole area in a good place to have a sustainable groundwater supply by being proactive and looking at this stuff in advance of this legislation getting passed. This is just some of the historical perspective and the joint partnerships that we've done with the neighboring cities. CCID and the Exchange Contractors are vested in seeing not only a reliable water supply for our growers, but a reliable water supply for the cities. That was a historical term, we use reliability now. With the Sigma, we talk about sustainability, it means the same thing. Is there going to be water down there as the city wants to grow and is it going to be of quality that we can use it? And if not, what do we do about it? So that leads us into the Groundwater Sustainability Plan itself. One of the aspects that we wanted to look at was to have regional sustainability, but also have independent sustainability. And one way to look at that is to look at a water budget. And if you ask yourself, what is a water budget? A water budget is basically kind of like a bank account. It's water going into the ground, water coming out of the ground. Is there more water that's leaving the ground than going in? If not, you're sustainable. If so, you have a deficit. So we analyzed, worked with the city staff, worked with Ken Schmidt, primarily Ken Schmidt did most of the overdraft analysis. And what we determined was currently the city's in overdraft of 2,200 acre feet per year. That's based on an approximate sustainable yield. The city can pump 0.4 acre feet per acre, or with the current footprint of the city, about 756 million gallons per year. That's a sustainable supply. So anything above that, we would need to work through offsetting that in the future. In our projected, in our projected water budget, we looked at the city's growth plan, what's the percentage of population, how's it going to grow, how's it going to impact the water supply? And the key for us to look at there is not look at the number, but as the city does grow, as the city does develop, let's look at just offsetting the new demands. We don't want to, we don't want to fully cook the soup before we've had a chance to think about it. And so that leads us into the next part of projects and management actions. With our GSP, we are sustainable as a group. We have a few areas that we need to work on and going into the future, but we are sustainable. The city's in slight overdraft right now, but there's nothing the city needs to do right now to mitigate that. We have till 2040 to mitigate that amount. Currently, some of the projects that, talking with Mark, that we have in mind as potentials, these are not projects you have to do, these are not ranked in any sort of order. What we wanted to do is put it in our plan, a viable path forward. And the thing to note here for the city is there is a clear path forward. Some other areas in the state, you may hear a lot of talk about how are they going to comply? The City of Las Bannas has a clear path forward and a sustainable path forward. And some of the options are stormwater capture, so capturing stormwater, let that leach into the ground, that'll offset your demand, because now you're putting, back to that bank account, you're actually putting some water back in. Demand reduction, it's a possibility, it's up to you guys if you want to do that, something you did in 2014, 2015, you cut the outdoor watering. Again, we're not proponents of one over the other, we want to just give these to you as options for the city to weigh on, what is the best path forward for them? Surface water transfer, that's something that CCID has done, or is currently doing and been doing for nearly 100 years with the City of Dos Palos, their water supply, their water quality is very poor. And so we work out a surface water transfer with them, so they can have clean drinking water for the residents. Groundwater credits, running through the heart of Las Bannas is what we call the Great Canal, the CCID Main Canal. And that recharges a lot of water, so it's helping to provide a water supply benefit to the city, even though it's CCID's water supply. And so we know that there's a potential to do some sort of groundwater credits, but we haven't fully vetted what that idea means. A lot of conversations to be had about how would we implement a program that would be a groundwater crediting system? Again, we're not proposing that we do anything now, but it is, it is an option in the future if we want to pursue that path. And then recharge projects, existing, city can invest in one on their own, they could partner with CCID or the Exchange Contractors on a recharge project. And then we added other as, just new ideas come about, trying to achieve sustainability. So we talked about independent sustainability for the city, that's a water budget perspective, that's looking at water in minus water out. The other thing that we need to look at for the state, and this is more regional effects, are kind of the six deadly sins of Sigma. One is water levels, that's if you have water levels that keep declining significantly over time, the State Board will step in or DWR will step in and tell you that you're not doing a good job. Luckily for us, we've put a pretty good rope around the area and we've been managing our level sustainable. Going through the drought of 2014, 2015 and 2016 with the programs that we implemented, the water levels had fully recovered and so we didn't see any long-term impacts, going through the worst drought on record. So that's good news. Groundwater storage, very similar to water levels, but a little bit different. But again, we'll be looking at water levels for that one. Seawater intrusion is something we don't need to worry about. Water quality from a Sigma perspective is totally different than the water quality that the city has to address on all the other regulations and requirements that you have to deal with. And so there's not a whole lot to think about in water quality, other than some of these projects may, by their nature, help with some water quality standards. But we're not recommending that the city needs to do anything for Sigma for their water quality, just keep doing what you're doing. And then land subsidence, another issue that we need to look at, pumping below the Corcoran Clay. And then interconnected surface waters is something that the city doesn't need to worry about. It's really stuff happening along the San Joaquin River, but it's one of the requirements that CCID and Exchange Contractors are looking at. So where does that leave us? As Mark talked about, we'll be bringing back that full plan on December 4th. We'll need to have a public hearing to adopt the plan that will formalize for the City of Las Bannas their process. For all the partners that we talked about, the other five cities and the counties and Exchange Contractors, by December of this year, we'll have everybody holding their public hearings, getting the GSP adopted, with the final deadline due January 31st, 2020. So we're looking to be a month or so ahead of the deadline, which is a good place for us to be, get in, get in early and get this thing done. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions on anything groundwater-related, if you guys have questions.
So we're 2,200 acre feet in the rears, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we have, as of now, land that was annexed 20 years ago, that has been guaranteed water rights. And we have between 1,500 and 2,000 lots that have already been annexed into our city that have been guaranteed water. So what's that going to do?
The
For homes.
For homes?
Yeah.
So the area encompassing the City of Las Bannas, they're going to be granted 0.4 acre feet per acre. I'm an ag, so we think in acre feet. So as the city grows, their overall footprint grows, which means their overall allocation will grow, but their overall demand increases as well. So it's something that we'll need to be looking at on how the city develops. A bunch of lots, small lots, may have a different water demand than a bunch of big lots. So it's going to really depend on how the city grows, but it's something that we'll be looking at.
Well, we have subdivisions that have been approved, haven't been developed, but they're between, we have another five to six years of inventory of lots that were annexed many, many years ago, for anyone on this council was elected. So I think we need to look at that to see what kind of impact that's going to be on this city and take that into consideration.
For sure.
So.
May I add something to that?
Yes.
Yes. This will not stop development necessarily, it's not designed to do that. We will have to address those units as they develop and getting their impact sustainable, which will be those five things that we're working at. To get to the 2,200, I don't think will be a big chore and then as we go along... And then as we go along, we'll look at it as to whether there's a, maybe even another development fee for groundwater sustainability that could enter into the picture. And this doesn't stop us. We're looking at a well site now. It won't stop us getting another well either. Just we do have to address it as a net yield of zero continually. The water supply is there. We just have to make sure we're net yielding zero, which is what we'll have to work on.
Do we have to treat it as importing surface-treated water too?
Well, that will tie into our other issue of water quality. Yes, we do have that in the long run in our water master plan to also have a service water source. That we need two sources, just not one source. That ties into all this.
Okay. All right, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. And this may have already been answered in the mayor's question. Not just the R1 residents that have been granted privileges for 20 years back for land that they can develop on, but we also have land that is R1 within the city. And because of state regulations, we have pressures upon us to convert some of that infill to R3 for more dense populations. So I'm sure these are things that you'll be working with our Public Works Department to be looking at. These are just, again, more regulations coming down from Sacramento that are out of our control. And as much as we can control them, I'm sure that the city will. But it's just another avenue of things that we have to deal with. If you can help me understand a little bit, you were talking about groundwater credits. And how does that work? You know, what will the credits be? What will they ask us to give something for in order to get the groundwater credit?
That's a great question. I ask myself that every day. So the way a groundwater credit system could work is the CCID Main Canal runs through the city. It's recharging. If we go back and we look, yeah. So if we look at the water budget perspective...
You want me to go back again?
That's okay. From the water budget perspective, we can just look at the sheer state of overdraft that the city's in. But the way that Sigma looks at it is they also want to look at those other six things. And so if the city's in overdraft, but the ground around it, which is primarily CCID and grasslands, is providing enough recharge to stabilize the water levels, then regionally we're sustainable. And so it'd be a mechanism to be shared and talked about on how would you develop a program where water levels aren't going down because of recharge from one area, even though another area is extracting? And how would you share in that benefit? I don't know exactly what it means. We haven't fully investigated it. But we know from just a historical perspective that that's what's been going on historically. So water levels haven't declined significantly because of that recharge. And then trying to quantify that and justify how we would formalize that partnership is something to be determined.
So I understand that we have some subsidence in Los Banas. So will that also be calculated into this groundwater credit program?
Yes.
Okay.
So the goal is to mitigate subsidence. It's the goal of the state. And so we're doing everything we can. Most of the impacts are occurring from extractions outside of the city boundaries, outside of the area, and the subsidence, the cone of depression is bleeding into the city. But we're working drastically on several projects, not only in our sub-basin, but across the river to try to solve these problems.
Okay. All right. Well, before I close out, Mayor, congratulations, Jared, on your appointment. And thank you so much, Chris, for all the years that you've worked with CCID.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Faria.
Thank you for coming tonight. Congratulations. Thanks for coming tonight, Chris. Water is one of, I love talking water. I love researching water. Where is most of the subsidence near Los Banas occurring?
So a lot of the subsidence that is being experienced in Los Banas is what we refer to as old subsidence, so kind of southeast. There was a big cone of depression. If you remember the picture of Dr. Pollan sent next to a power pole, and there was, you know, the worst subsidence that the nation and most of the world has ever seen is, although it's some distance, the cone of depression, the rings of subsidence that were occurring actually extended up into Los Banas. We have a little bit of subsidence going on with some of the deep pumping going up north in the Patterson area. I don't think it's fully affecting the city, but yeah.
And so the cone, where's the center of the cone in that southeast area?
So this would be west of Mendota.
West of Mendota?
Correct.
Okay. And then it just kind of, that's the worst of it, and then it kind of gets, it's like a cone coming up to us. It gets less and less as it comes to Los Banas.
Yes. And along the Delta Mendota Canal, there were a couple of different study areas that CCID worked with, the San Luis and Delta Mendota Water Authority on and the Bureau, where there were some localized deep wells, ones below the corcoran clay, that were concentrated. And so we worked on a groundwater investigation, and as a result of that, a lot of that pumping has ceased to try to curtail the subsidence that was occurring. And it was successful mostly in those areas that we studied.
Now, how much does the leakage from the water projects help our recharge around here? Because I grew up in Banta. Are you familiar with Banta?
A little bit.
Paradise Avenue, water table was three feet and all reclaimed land. But our water table wasn't three feet until after those water projects were built. And because they were above, so high above Tracy, all the farmers in the 70s were putting in tile drains like maniacs because the drainage was so bad. You'll notice there are no trees on that part of Tracy. The trees are all over on the west side because of the water tables. And so I'm looking here and wondering, you know, Los Banas, we're not, the City of Los Banas is a very, very small user of water in the big picture. Our City of Los Banas, we don't use very much water at all. And we're even more conservative than most cities because we've had meters forever. But, and so I know that everything else around us should probably be recharging us. And so somebody's sucking an awful lot of water out of the ground, and it's not us. And so I'm just curious of how much, you know, are we getting much benefit from that? Also, another question is drip irrigation is, some people think that that saves water. Well, it does if you're using groundwater, right? But if you're getting water like through the canals from somewhere else, drip irrigate, we used to flood irrigate. And when we got the water from the canals, we benefited from recharge in a very big way. Drip irrigation off of the Delta Mendota doesn't recharge. It doesn't help us. And so I'm wondering, what is out there that's helping us and what is out there that's not helping us? And if you could just kind of hit a few of those items.
Well, I can tell that you're paying attention to water and that's exciting.
Since I was born.
I could tell. And so some of the things that are helping us are, like you suggested, irrigation, it's deeper colation that's helping. It's clean water typically from the constituents that we'd be looking at. And it provides recharge. Some of the projects, I know we talked with the city about some of the projects that CCID has been working on, and that's providing a great benefit, not only by helping to regulate some of the flood flows from just a flooding perspective, but by feathering that out, it's also providing additional recharge of good, clean water. And then the recharge project that CCID has north or south of Pioneer Avenue is providing a good benefit. We see a cone of depression in the city, but most of that is overcome by the regional area. Another positive thing would be grasslands outside of the city limits, some extension. But they flood up their ponds and leave water sitting there. So it provides a positive impact. We haven't seen it in the City of Los Banas like we've seen it in some other cities where you can dig with the shovel and find water. So we haven't seen that, but it's something to definitely be thinking about as you do more and more projects to make sure you don't, on the flip side, put too much in there. From a negative standpoint...
There's a lot of deep wells around the area, huh? Or have they stopped pumping those deep wells in the area, or they're still pumping?
Most of the wells that are south of the city that were below the corcoran clay have not pumped nearly as much in the most recent years as they had historically.
How about north of us? Because they punched a bunch of them a few years ago.
North of, immediately north of the City of Los Banas, there's not a whole lot of...
About a half hour north? About a half hour north?
Half hour north, there's a lot of pumping. And one of the projects that we're working on really hard on trying to implement this regional thing, so we talked about the 23 GSAs and the six plans. One thing that we're advocating really strong for is really getting a handle on what's going on in that area that you're talking about.
Very good. I grew up on a farming family. My family were pioneers in Banta on Paradise Avenue, broke the ground there. And that's all, up there, that's all reclaimed land, has been reclaimed land for like 100 years or more. And so water was everything. You're involved with the Water District. So many people don't understand how important it all is to be involved. And I tell the community, be involved in all these decisions. And you have these water meetings and whatnot. Come to them so we know, so everybody can be a part of this sustainability, because it really is a big deal. And sustainability and quality, you've got to have it all. And it's something that we can't, you know, I'm really, really pleased, very pleased with how our staff and work with CCID and this project coming forward, this plan, this is dynamite, Todd. And so, and how many acres, just one more question, off the top of your head, how many acres are flooded in the area for wildlife? Duck clubs, refuges? Do we have like a rough number?
Hundred, 100,000?
100,000. That's all benefit recharge because that's all surface water, right?
For the most part.
Yeah. So just about all that water comes, is surface water from somewhere else. So every time it gets pumped onto the duck ponds and the refuges, it's recharging our aquifer. So just one more benefit of the wildlife industry I like to stress in Los Banas.
Yeah, one thing, Councilperson Faria, it's recharging the aquifer, not specifically where we're located.
But it works across?
A little bit, yes. It imports across, especially when you're in droughts, it reverse flows. But in the normal years, though, it's making healthy the northwest, the northeast areas mostly. The other thing to think about this, and I believe in the report, you might correct me if I'm wrong, Jared, I think that a lot of the cities are having a negative water balance. And I believe we're definitely in this GSP, the one with the largest negative balance.
But you're by far the largest city.
But we're by far the largest city. And I think we're the largest user of water, actually, by far, I think we are. So we are actually, we get a lot of benefit from the canals and from the recharge that CCID is doing from some of the grasslands. We're getting a lot of benefit from that. That's what's balancing the whole area.
Right.
That we have to concentrate how our individual area gets balanced, whether it's groundwater exchange or enforcing water restrictions more, whatever it happens to be. So we do have a, we do have a task as a city to also worry just about ours, and which we'll be working on, yes. No question.
On hydrology on that, speaking of regions, are there hydrological barriers between us and say the wetlands, or does that water flow pretty freely within the aquifers?
Most of the water in and around the City of Los Banas is flowing toward the city.
Okay.
So in other words, it's creating a cone.
Okay.
And that's why you see the overdraft of 2,200 acre feet.
Okay. And as a city, we're a large user, but when you compare us to all the other water uses around here, we're not.
I'd have to take a look at the numbers.
Compared to agriculture, we're nothing.
As far as what comes in and out, we are the highest one with the negative, I believe. But the other thing is, the only barrier that we really have, I mean, we do have some flowing backwards, is really in the vertical, and it's the corcoran clay. It's the vertical barrier, not...
The vertical barrier. And that extends through the entire valley?
Yeah.
Or there are breaks in the clay?
For the most part. A rough rule of thumb in this area is from I-5 to 99, the corcoran clay exists.
And it's solid all the way across?
It's pretty thick.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. Thanks for all the questions. Thanks for all the information. I can sit there and talk water with you all night long, but I know everybody else wants to get home sometime soon.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
The chromium 6.
Yes.
Okay. No one ever heard of chromium 6 until the State Water Resources Board set a standard of 10 parts per billion. And then they were sued, and so now we don't know, there is no standard at this time, but I understand there will be a standard. And the original California standard was 50 parts per billion, and the federal was 100 parts per billion total chromium. So now when they dropped it to 10, we just got a flood of phone calls saying, your water's bad, it went bad in the last year. No, the State Water Resources went bad in the last year and decided to lower the standard. Our water's always been the same for the last 100 years. So what are you seeing or what are you hearing from Aqua or whatever as to what the standard's going to be?
So I think it's, I don't want to speak where I'm not qualified to speak. I would guess it's coming back at something lower than it is currently. But as far as our plan's concerned for this groundwater sustainability, we're not proposing to try to solve the chrome 6 problem here. We're not mandating ourselves in this plan. What we'd like to do is give the city the opportunity to solve that from another perspective of what they need to do, and then provide an opportunity to not only help meet the deficit that we have in overdraft, but we can provide with some of these projects, maybe provide some resiliency to that chrome 6 problem. Chrome 6...
By blending?
Chrome 6 in our canal, it doesn't affect our plants. So there's different surface water transfers or exchanges that we can get into when and if, that's one of the paths forward that the city would like to take. We'd love to engage.
Yeah. One of the important things to remember is the water quality that we deal with as a drinking water supplier is totally different than the water quality that we're doing with this groundwater sustainability plan. Any kind of mixing of surface water will probably lower the, will help us with the chrome 6. Mixing it will help. It's a very high mix level. And the last word I got, we're about six months away, that's just an estimate of having a new chrome 6 standard, and it won't be above point 10. It might be below point 10, but it won't go 10, it won't go higher to 20. So it's, we'd have, it'd have to go a lot higher for us to still be in the situation that would help us. And then about a year from now, if things go the way I've heard, it'll actually be a standard that has to be enforced. So that's what we're looking at. That's just an estimation from the water board. They really don't know, but that's what they're estimating at the moment. Any type of surface water, though, could do nothing but help the situation of quality, so.
Okay. Hi, Chris.
Mayor Chris White, I'm the Executive Director for the Exchange Contractors. So when, I haven't retired, just moved on to other water rights protection and so forth for this area. So I wanted to kind of make that statement. The other thing is, from my perspective, where we're at here today and what you're seeing is a culmination of many years of cooperation between the surrounding districts and the City of Los Banas. And you're absolutely correct. The surrounding farmlands use much more water as an area than the city, probably, but actually on a per-acre basis, it's probably about the same from a water use perspective. There's the difference, though. If you're in a surrounding ag district, you're importing the water that you're using. If you're in the city, you're pumping the groundwater that's there. So Sigma tells us that you have to develop a boundary, and the city is within your sphere of influence. And within that, what is the balance, just within that? Not looking outside your area, but just looking at those lines specifically. So if we look at those lines specifically, the rules tell us you're 2,200 acre feet in overdraft, just within those. But we do know that because of the water use and the water imports that are occurring around you, we also know that a major import for water in this aquifer is whenever Los Banas Creek runs. There's a lot of recharge that occurs there. So there's a lot of water that's flowing across the boundary into the city. So there's an opportunity there with your partners who have been working with you for the last 25, 30 years on groundwater, and that's what Jared was presenting as one of the potential ideas for sustainability into the future. But you are in a very fortunate position. You have a path to sustainability under the Groundwater Management Act.
So we're not doing bad, short answer?
You're doing really good.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much, Jared. And again, congratulations, and thank you for coming here. Thank you, Chris. Congratulations. And thank you for coming here. Thank you, Chris. And anytime you want to come back, give us an update, please do so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Let's go on to Pioneer Road Expansion Update. And I've been waiting for this topic to come up. Mark, give us the news.
Thank you very much. Listen, from just a personal point of view, I think it's good news. I really do. What we have, we, last time, the last couple meetings ago, I think, we presented our tip request that we had carryover. We requested a carryover, I think it was 24, 26 million in that area, because that was carried over before. In discussing this, there's basically two regional projects. One is the AME, the expressway, and one is our Pioneer. Pioneer's not credit, not ready, quite ready to be put on the RTIP. There's some work that has to be done to get it on there. So in discussing this with your representative, the mayor, we were discussing what type of a real, of a construction money we would need, as good seed money as maybe a possibility of doing a phase, as seed money for the 34, 36 million of construction money that we're eventually going to need. And it was decided, and it's a good decision, just looking at it, that we would need about $10 million, if I'm correct about that, Mayor Alalta. And that's what we were looking for as a pot of money. Nothing's guaranteed, because it has to go before certain agencies, to end up construction available in '25, '26. It also would be a pot of money that would allow us to compete for other money, because it'd be a little less than a third of the construction money. And we're, that's a major inroad into this project, made of the complete project. So the last that we heard, and this was just at a workshop, so until it gets voted by the governing board, it's not for sure. But it seemed to have, I think, almost unanimous approval, unless someone just wasn't speaking up. We, it was discussed that 5 million would be probably the carryover on the RTIP money. And MCAG was tasked with the, they were given a task to find another 5 million for us in other funding sources, including some that they get every year, that would be ready in '25, '26. So, and I think, kind of maybe this is simplicity on a way, but, so what we're looking for as a city, is we're looking for when that construction is ready in '25, '26, we have a $10 million pot. There wouldn't, we'd have to compete for this in two years in the RTIP cycle. And there might, there could be more money available in that new cycle. But we'll, we'll go after that at that point. So that's what we're looking for. To, to refresh, refresh everyone's mind, on Measure V, regional money, we have funding through the right-of-way stage, which is the stage that starts construction. So we have funding all the way through the right-of-way stage, it's almost 9 million, it's 8.7 million. And we're trying to get this not totally guaranteed money, because the California Transportation Commission has a right to assign this money around. But you have to make, you have to still have reservation to even have a chance. So we're looking at maybe getting that 10 million. That's what our minimum ask that we're asking to get the 10 million in there. And that would give us 18.7 million of a $43 million project, which is a huge chunk of change, thousands of times beyond what we have done in, in the past on certain projects. And this will, I guess, goes before the governing board, I think at their next meeting. And I think that's all I have to say about it. The one big issue, the one issue that we do have, and we're going to attack it, we need a project study report, which is a report that's recognized by entities like Caltrans and Funding. Tells you what the project is, tells you what the phasing is, tells you what the environmental impacts are in the initial stage, tells you traffic counts, tells you what right-of-way you need, really is a, is a large summary of the project. And you have to have that there in order to get in the RTIP cycle. That's why we couldn't compete in this cycle. We were looking at prob, we're not probably, we're looking at adding someone at the beginning of the year, a transportation firm dedicated to getting that PSR out in eight to 12 months, which is a real push. We believe they can do it, and they have to do it for us to make the next cycle. So that's our push. And that is the biggest technical block that we have to overcome. And we're going to be doing that. We do, we're doing planning right now on it, and it'll be a year and a half on planning. So we're gonna start that process before the planning process is done, and have them work together on that. But that's where I'm at. I know there's probably more that the mayor would like to add to this discussion.
Well, today we had a excellent meeting with Caltrans. Caltrans came to us, the District Director Ten came to us with his staff. And we had a very productive meeting. This project's going to happen. It's, it's a realistic project. And in the words of Caltrans, it is a project that is needed. It is a project that is doable. And it is a project that is a very creative project to solve our woes as far as traffic is concerned. So we felt really good, unless Alex, Mark, you want to chime in, felt really good about the, the project today. And I need your support, Council. You've given it to me already. You've given me the power to go forward. On September 19th, there's a meeting in Gustine, 3:00 PM. Citizens, you're welcome also. This is our only shot to get this project. And we want to pull out all the stops to, to make Pioneer a reality. It looks good. We went to the MCAG meeting, and the only project that was basically to be discussed was Aunt Watermer Set Expressway. And the, the unanimous consideration was that we put money towards the, the Pioneer project. But we're not finished yet. And so if you can make that 3 o'clock meeting in Gustine, and, and come forward, show your support. You've already done that. I thank you. But we need to push to the finish line. And we have the, the money that's been voted on. As Mark said, we have the money to the right-of-way purchase. Now we're working on construction money, seed money, 10 million. And this project's going to happen. Caltrans is going to help us. So they want to have quarterly meetings to, to, for progress reports. And what came out in the, the meeting today, which is kind of an added bonus, is what they're going to do to improve Highway 152, to, to see where the deficiencies are, to, to help with that. And while we're constructing Pioneer and putting that through the process. So excellent, excellent meeting today. And I don't want to continue to belabor the subject, but, but we all felt really good. Mrs. Lewis?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The report that Mark made mention of, that we, I guess, would have to hire consultant agents to put it together for the city. Is that something new that MCAG?
No.
So we've known about that for a little while?
No, we have to have, we have to project study review, PSR. We have to have that done.
No, I'm not saying whether we have to have it done. I just want to know how long has it been that we've known about it? Or is it just something new that they've expressed to us that we needed?
Well, I, I, Mark, you want to answer that question?
Yeah, no, it, it is a, the PSR is a process of any of these projects. They're a process of any of these projects. And it was funded with, it, it got funding from the regional in the last go-around. We actually got money for it, about 130,000. And if that's not enough, we have a 4, a $500,000 earmark that we can use. I was talking to MCAG, in case we need our money, we can use some of that $500,000 earmark that was for right-of-way. We can use some of the right-of-way that, that's in the, in the regional fund, and that replaced the one we take. You have to remember, we, until about a year and a half ago, we didn't even have a schedule for this. We didn't even have a request for this. We didn't have a funding source for this in the regional. PSR's always been in there. If you look at, I think it's four or five projects that we listed for you, and I don't think the bypass, I think it's four projects, because the bypass was just there as a placeholder. They all have PSR in there. They all do. So the PSR is something, we wanted to start it after we, the planning grant was finished. We don't have that luxury. So we'll start it in the beginning of the year to get that year, to get it done in a year. So our project will have that. And that allows you to get in the door in the RTIP.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So this project's going to happen. It just has to be due diligence to make sure that we continually push. And, and it's a project, it's very doable because of the cost. The bypass was a half a billion dollars with a B, 490 million to be exact. And it was never going to happen. This project does not devastate our, our community economically, because we still will be within the sphere of influence and the city limits. So the tax dollars will remain in Los Banas, where with the bypass, it wouldn't have. And we're figuring 30 to 40% of our tax dollars come off the highway. So we're not going to, we're not going to decimate that portion. And it's a safety project, because we have 1,800 kids on, on Highway 152. And help by relieving some of that traffic, and making it a little bit easier for people to, to go north, south of our community, in our community. So this is a great project. It's an all-around good project. And unless Mark or Alex want to say anything, it's, it's, it's a project that's going to happen. Would that be your opinion, too? Okay. Yes.
You know, what, what I like to always say is, it's just not asphalt. We have a bike pedestrian trail along this path, along this road. It'll take you from one end of the town over to the college eventually, when it's all built out. It's part of the bike plan. It's very important. There might be a way to arrange the lineup of it through the open field, where we might get a little bit more of an aesthetic appeal to it. And because we're getting, you know, the PSR will show phasing. But there is a possibility, and I think a high possibility, that, that it might be able to build, be built out in one phase, just because of the money. I, I hate phased projects, because they sit around a long time. I can't guarantee that. But there, unless we don't get any other funding source, and we have to go to a phase one, that, that's something we'll have to do, because you want that better than nothing. But we are looking forward to that. And it's really, it's really good. The, I was totally impressed with the visit from Caltrans. And I'll be honest, I'm usually not. And they were really, really into it. And I was really impressed with State Route 152 planning grant, because the money that we have for a grant to go to that, sounds like they're ready to do something on that, once we get that planning grant done also. So it was a good meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Travis, go ahead.
Just one last comment. I think we've, with the assistance of the mayor and Public Works Director, we've made significant progress on this project over the last couple of years. That's a great point, Mark. This will be more than, you know, asphalt for cars. It will be, again, a significant amenity with the trail added to the community. So I'm really looking forward to the day we break ground on this project.
Thank you. Any other questions from Council? Yes, Mr. Fariah, go ahead.
Just one comment. I'm very pleased you're shooting for that all-at-once construction. I don't, I, I agree with you. I don't like phasing either. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to Item 11, Discussion Regarding Planning Commission Attendance Policy and Planning Commission Member Seats. Director Elms?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. There's a PowerPoint presentation, a very brief PowerPoint presentation. Okay. So just some background of how we got to where we are today. Back on August 7th, the City Council directed staff to evaluate and recommend a policy concerning absences of the planning commission, and to consider a reduction of members from seven members to five members. So currently, right now, we have an existing seven-member planning commission with four-year terms. Currently, there are two vacancies, which leaves us with five active members, five appointed members. Just, it is included within your staff report, but just for the record, our chairman is John Cates, which is a District Three, David Dees, District Three, Mona Giuliani, District Two, Thomas Higbee of District One, Susie Toscano of District Three. And currently, there's no representative from District Four. The vacancies, the two positions, were Eric Lamon, which was District Two, and then Tom Spada, which was District Four, which was our District Four representative. So the current policy, right now, within our ordinance, does have a seven-member, as I stated, planning commission. It does have two-year terms. And it's staggered, so that three end on one year, three vacancies are on one year, and then four are the following year. And currently, right now, if a planning commissioner is absent without cause for three successive regular meetings, the planning commission or city manager may request the city council to declare the position vacant. So that's our current policy. And then the policy goes on to say that not absent without cause is an absence that is due to illness, it's an absence that is unavoidable, or if a member gives notice to staff before the meeting. So basically, that makes most absences excusable. And that's the situation that we're in today. It leaves not only the planning commission in a bind, but it leaves staff in a bind, trying to meet quorums. And over the past year, we have canceled at least one meeting, because we weren't able to meet a quorum. Unfortunately, that night, we did have somewhat of a, of a full room. It was an active project where folks wanted to speak during the public forum, during the public hearing. A public notice had been published, mailers had been sent to all the property owners. And the commissioners that were present did get backlash from, from the public, just of disappointment that they had taken time out of their day, and expected that the commissioners would show up. So staff did conduct research based on the direction that we received from the council. And so we conducted a listserv. And this is a listserv that we are a part of with all other planning departments within the state of California. So the other planning departments that responded, what we saw was that, well, they varied from city to city, but that the majority of cities were five commissioners. And that they had four-year terms. And cities that had districts, it was very important that they had four-year terms, because the planning commissioners were reflective of that district and ran with that, they were concurrent with that city council member. And what we did see that was common was that after three consecutive absences, an auto, automatic resignation or process for removal was required. So with that being the basis, staff is recommending that the city council direct staff to amend the Los Banas Municipal Code to establish five, a five-member planning commission with four-year terms. And then it would have a two-year term for the member at large that was appointed by the mayor, so that that appointed person ran with the mayor's seat, with the mayor's appointment, which is every two years. This would be consistent with what we saw, but also what we see would be good for the city of Los Banas. And the next would be also to require automatic forfeiture of a position on the planning commission. If a member is absent for three consecutive meetings, excused or unexcused, so it'd be very narrow. It wouldn't matter. If they have three consecutive meetings, then they would, it would be an automatic forfeiture of their seat. This would include special or adjourned meetings, and/or a total of five meetings with any six-month period. So this is what staff is suggesting at this time. And I'd like to receive any comments or feedback at this time, as well as direction on how to proceed forward with either developing a policy or not.
So what would we do with the, the current members? I mean, we have a, a good planning commission.
So we currently do have five members.
Yeah.
And if that is at the pleasure of the council to, to reduce the number from seven to five, we'd easily be able to do that, because that is where we're at right now. We just wouldn't fill the two vacancies that we have. The issue is that we do not have a representation for District Four. But we do have vacancies that are coming up, that would be at the end of this year. And that's where we would look at having full district representation. Then by the end of 2019, at the beginning of 2020, when new appointments are made.
And with a five-member, what, what would we do? I mean, if, if, because, you know, say we like what we have right now. And, and I'm just trying to look at, you know, you have track record with the people that are here. It's, it's worked out well with them. If we went to five, would they automatically be disqualified if we had too many in one district?
Possibly. I wouldn't say disqualified from applying, as the policy doesn't disqualify. But it does encourage the council to appoint, to have representation from each district. What I would say, though, is that District Three is heavy, and to have a fair representation of the city in all the districts, and then a representative that's reflective of that council member in their district, we'd want to make sure it's even. So we should encourage that it's, there's even representation.
Uh huh. Okay. Yeah, that's pretty much answered. Yeah, that's pretty much answered my question. Okay, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I, I think that's a little too lenient still. I mean, missing five meetings in a six-month period? Missing five in a twelve-month period is still kind of loose, in my opinion. I think if you're going to sign up to do a job, you need to show up for it, so I would like to see these a little tighter than that. I mean, as it looks right now, that's missing about forty percent of the attendance in a six-month period. That's just really not acceptable.
Okay.
Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, I, I just wanted to make a comment on the district representation, and I think that at some point, this is going to work itself out, but a five planning, a five-person planning commission, I think, would be substantial enough for our city. And again, would give each council person the ability to have representation for their district and the mayor to have an at-large appointment. And, and I think that's a fair, that's a fair way of doing it. But I, I think over time, you know, the district seats will work, work themselves out as they become vacant.
Mr. Freya.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I remember when we went from five to seven. In those days, we didn't have districts. The idea of the five, I think, is a good idea, and if, I would recommend that each one of those be a direct appointment of each council member from that district. And, and then the mayors would be a direct appointment from the mayor, and then, of course, they have to live in that district. So that you have a direct representation from the council on the planning commission, which the planning commission is pretty empower, pretty important. There are many important decisions come to the city that don't come to council, they just come to planning commission, and but, and so then the council sometimes doesn't get a chance to chime in on that. But if you have a planning commissioner whom you've appointed, you know that your voice is going to be heard as a council member, and you're the elected official by the people. And so it's our responsibility as the elected officials of the people to make sure that the will of the people is reflected on the planning commission. Five, five absences in six months is too much, I agree. Three consecutive absences, expulsion, I got no problem with that at all. Illness is, and, and emergency situations, calling in ahead of time, I mean, you're going to be absent. I mean, that's just, oh, I don't feel like going, I'll call in. That's not acceptable. So it has to be, if someone's got a, maybe someone's got a, maybe a recovery or something or illness or something, you know, looking, those are conditions that have to be, I think, judged in a judicious way. Three consecutive absences, I think, is reasonable grounds for removal. Five in six months, I think, is made a little too, as I agree, is made a little bit too lenient, lenient. So that's essentially my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Mr. Santos.
Thank you. You said that within the past year, and I know it was a big meeting, you said that within the past year, there has been one council meeting, correct? And before that, I'd hate to bring this up late, but do you have data of what before that?
Sure. So we didn't have issues with quorums. That, that particular meeting, I think, was the first that we had ever had since we had gone to a seven-member planning commission. It, the reason, looking at the archives, that it was suggested to go from a five-member, ten-plus years ago, to a seven-member, one of the reasons was to always have a quorum and that they felt that with more membership, with more members, that there would be a higher chance of having more quorums. Though that doesn't seem to really be the situation, I think if you have a dedicated group of folks that have committed to do this position, that they will come and you shouldn't have an issue with the quorums. Typically, most of our planning commissioners, we have a very good and open relationship with them, that they tell us in advance of whatever is scheduled, if there's a procedure going to happen or something that is unavoidable, then we're able to know and schedule, and we definitely know ahead of time before a public hearing notice is published, that whether we're going to have enough to make a quorum, and which we always do, except for that one instance where we didn't have any, those folks didn't call in, that there was two, in fact, that didn't call in, and we were not aware of that until right before the meeting started.
Okay. Well, I have to say for me, I think that a five-person, I think that a five-person planning council would, or planning commission would be good. I think that would work, just hopefully it'd help with that quorum. But I, I'm, I'm okay with the absences that you have set up, have set up here with the three consecutive and then the five within six months. I, and I definitely believe, which as was stated by Jones, that once you, if you've chosen to do a job, you should do it, but I also know that there's a lot of different circumstances that may call you away from certain things. So I personally am okay if we go down to a five and then keep the rules as have been stated by staff, so.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I brought this to council, I had done some research, and I think over the scope of the period of time that I did the, the one year and maybe one extra month within that year, there were something like, I think it was like nineteen absences and two meetings that were not held for lack of quorum, and then, of course, you know, there were several meetings because there were just no agenda items to, to, to be had. But, but you know, I, I'm just going to say it, I, I sat on that planning commission for a long time, ten years, and in the ten years that I sat there, I was only absent once, and it was because I was out of town visiting a friend and nine eleven hit on the day that I was supposed to fly back, which was a Tuesday. And so I missed the, the meeting that Wednesday, I believe it was on a Tuesday, because all the airports in the United States were shut down. My mother was sick in the hospital, a lot of times on her deathbed, and I made the decision, even though I was spending twenty-four-seven with her in the hospital, when I came, when it was time for that meeting, I, I made the decision to come to the meeting because I made a commitment to the city that I would be there, and then I went back to the care of my mother. Now, different people have different ideas about how they want to meet their obligations in life, but I think it's imperative that, you know, we make it clear to the candidates who are going to sit on this commission that your attendance is important, and if you can't set that as a priority, then maybe that's not the commission for you to set on. I, I don't know that any of us here just don't show up because we don't want to show up or we make another priority, priorities come up because it's something that's unavoidable. But I, you know, I don't make any, any meetings or obligations for myself on Wednesdays because I know that I have to be here, and if I'm out of town, I might get stuck somewhere and not be able to get back. So I, I think it's a, it's a really important commission because it's right next to the city council. They make decisions that transfer down to us, and, and I think it's something that when we interview potential candidates, that we have to be mindful. Are you really, are you willing and able to make these meetings and can you set them as a priority? And, and that's my personal feeling. You know, it, it's, if, if we want to do this as, as constituents within our community to give our service, even if it's a lesser commission, it's still an important commission. And so I, I think it's really important that people show up to the meetings. I struggled a little bit with the amount of absences that one person can have within a six-month period of time, but at the council's pleasure, if, if they feel that that's too much, I, I'll go along with it. I, I think that it's important that you come and do your homework and be prepared. That's how I feel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Jones.
Hey, Stacy, can you go back over the four-year term, switching from a two-year term to a four-year term?
Mm-hmm. Sure.
On the reasoning on why that is preferred?
Because that would run concurrent with the city council members' terms, as those are four-year terms.
So would the council members be choosing at the beginning of their term or within the first month on who's going to?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You know, I, a direct appointment by the mayor is, is something I don't cherish. I, I like the interview process because, Stacy, you get to chime in and because selecting the right person for this job is important. It's imperative, and we have to find someone that can work with staff and work with the council, and so that's why I always like a second opinion in having a council member when we, when we interview. And I would like to see that continue with, if, if, if the council member makes an, an appointment or a recommendation, at least we interview these people to find out if they are the right fit. And, and I, I, I kind of like having the, the interview process because it helps me vet the, the person that I want to bring forward because someone else may see something that they like or, or, or not like, and, and when we have open interviews and, and also have people apply from that district, it's, it's not just one person choosing, and, and I, I worry a little bit about that. So that's just kind of my opinion, and, and I really like the interview process. Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman Freya, I, I don't know if you were making inference that a council person would be making this decision as an individual. I, I would still see myself interviewing with staff on someone that I would select or a number of applicants that would be putting in their application for my, for my district and, and not making that decision. Certainly, I, I would want to see Stacy in on that interview when someone would come for the district that I represent, so that there is another eye and another opinion.
Mr. Freya.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vaughn.
Oh.
Go ahead, Bill.
Thanks. Okay, go ahead.
So the city of Los Spanos is a general law city, and one of the few powers that the mayor has is appointment of commissions. So with the confirmation of the city council, so you have to find a system, which you have in place now, where actually the mayor is the appointment authority with the confirmation of the city council. May I suggest that if you're looking for a particular district to fill, that, that, that councilman be part of that interview panel, along with the mayor and the department head. But it is one of the few powers that the mayor has, separate and apart from the city council, which is the appointment of commissioners, not, that's not true in all charter cities, but it is true in general law cities, which is what the city of Los Spanos is. So we would need to work within that framework to achieve what Mr. Freya is asking for, which I think is essentially input from that district council member on who that selection is at the interview level.
It's basically what we do now, we rotate bases, on a rotating basis.
Except that you would use the...
Council member from that district.
If you're looking to fill that particular...
And I love that idea.
And if that's the way the law reads, then that's the way we need to do it. Frankly, I, I wish the law didn't read that way. As a council member, I'd like to be able to, with the advice of staff, appoint who I want to appoint to represent my district, but that's not the way the law reads. Charter, charter cities, a lot of them are that way, but they function differently, they have full-time council members. But since that's the way the law reads, then that's the way we need to go. So then I would recommend that each council member, we would have that interview process the way we do now, with the person from the district and member staff.
Including the mayor, has a council member sit in on his interview?
Oh, that's, that's mayor's purview.
Yeah, well, I, you know, what's good for you is good for me.
Well, I would, well, I would, I would recommend on the mayor, then you would have whoever's sitting pro temp.
Okay.
That's what I would recommend, that it would be formalized and standardized.
Okay. I mean, I mean, because, you know, we've, we've done this now, I don't know how many years, and I'll tell you, I, when I come out of those interviews for the, for the planning commission, I feel really good because three people have, have looked over the individual because that planning commission is an important seat. It is very important, and in some ways, they have, they have a lot of power. So, so we want to make sure that we, you know, first and foremost, we have someone that we like, someone that can work with staff, and someone is going to make good decisions, and, and, and that three-person team really vets that, in, in my opinion. So, okay, Mr. Jones, question?
What options do we have to terminate a planning commissioner if they're just not working out?
So currently, right...
Say for just cause?
Sure. Currently, right now, the ordinance reads, and I'm just gonna go, I'm gonna read it verbatim. So if a member of the commission is absent without cause from three successive regular meetings of the commission, the commission or the city manager may request the city council declare the position vacant. So it'd have to be brought before the city council, and the city council would have to declare that position vacant. We'd have to provide reasons and go back into the history of the three successive meetings that were missed without cause and, and describe all of that publicly before the city council.
So any termination would have to be public?
Yes. As the, as the policy is written right now, there wouldn't be an automatic forfeiture.
Okay, thank you.
So, so let me summarize. So, so we're probably looking at a five-member commission, number one. Counsel, pretty good? Okay. Number two, we have a, an interview process where the person of that district will sit in with the mayor and the economic development director for an interview. Good with that? Everybody? Okay. And number three, it seems like the only questionable portion of this is, is how many, how many absences are we going to allow? And I think five within a six-month is kind of, ooh, extreme, and, and I'd like to see that reduced. That, that's the only question I have at this point, that, that I think five absences within a six-month period is, 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 is not tolerable.
How many wait-?
Okay. So, I mean, I mean, I, I think that's one thing, I, I've heard, you know, comment from Mr. Jones, that that's extreme.
That's something we're not to take back and kind of think about because there is quite a few variables with that, but...
Yeah.
Five in six months...
Oh, let's get one person talking. In a minute, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Five in six months is obviously just high. That's not doing the public any service there, so two might be a little too tight, just in case if somebody has some circumstances that just push right over that. So it seems like three might be a decent number, but maybe one unexcused and two have to be excused, or, or at least bone in.
How, how about three consecu... How about three consecutive and four overall in six months?
Still a little loose.
Still a little loose? Is that, I'm just trying to get a happy medium here.
I don't know, we might have to just...
We can give you some options, and you can, and that five, six months isn't a magic timeframe either. It could be twelve months, it could be...
Okay.
Four and twelve months, or five and twelve. We, we can give you all kinds of different...
Yeah.
All right.
Iterations of that for you to think about and chew on.
Okay, let's go with five and an assist with, with every interview, to include the economic development director.
And we can come up with some options on the total number of absences over what period of time for you guys to pick your menu of options.
Thank you.
Counsel, we good? Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
So this question is for our city attorney. Is that one aspect of the new writing of this code that you're going to bring back to the council?
Of course. We would either come back with question, further questions or discussion on what we're coming up with, or actually come back with some alternatives within that portion of the ordinance that you can discuss that night.
Well, I, I'll just give you my two cents right now. I'm, I'm not in favor of making it any easier, so I'll go along with Councilmember Jones and Freya to tighten it up even more because, you know, we're here to, to be in the business of doing business and not in the business of allowing people to have a lot of excuses as to why they're not showing up.
So for instance, five in twelve months would be basically half of the allowed absences in a six-month period, so it would be tighter. So that's what I'm saying, there can be different ways to make it tighter, and I don't think the six months is a magic, is a magic number, so we can give you some options that do tighten it up, but maybe expand the timeframe.
Oh, is that something that perhaps this council's willing to discuss tonight so that we can move forward and just make a decision?
I'll discuss, I'm good with it. Yeah?
Here's an idea, so what Mr. Vaughn was saying, go to five in... What Mr. Vaughn was saying, go to five in 12 months. Let's try that, or a year or two, see how that works out. If it's, if it's being abused, if it's, we're pushing towards five absences, we can tighten it up, bring it back forward later on.
Do we still want to leave the three consecutive in? Yes.
Three consecutive, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll work with that because we can always, if it's not working out and staff, you know, indicates to us that, you know, we're still having a problem, then it could always be brought back to council for modification.
So three consecutive and five, five within 12? Four or five within 12? Ms. Johnson, Santos.
I was going to say, I know I originally commented to say that the five was okay, but I, I still believe that, but if, also it's at the discretion of the council, so that's where I?
All right. Okay, Freya, any comment?
No, it all sounds good to me.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the three in a row has got to, got to be, I mean, that, that one's a definite.
Okay.
The others, are you talking about four and 12, or five and 12, just options like that? Is that what you're thinking about now?
So what did we say, five or four?
I think we should come up with a number.
Five, five?
Five and 12?
If you ask me, I'm going to go for the tighter one, so?
Tighter one, four and 12?
Four and 12.
Four and 12.
Okay, I'm good with four and 12.
Okay, at your direction. Four and 12, three consecutive?
Can I ask a question?
Assist from the interview and five-member council, or planning commission. Yes.
I'm just thinking ahead, I know that the absence policy is in all the other commissions too. Is that, are we just going to leave those how they are right now?
We're just discussing?
Seat as it is, right?
No, but the absence policy?
We're just talking about planning commission tonight.
Yeah, we're only looking at articles.
Only planning commission.
Which is only for planning commission.
That's what was agendaed, so we'll go with that. Okay, direction good enough?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good discussion, Council, thank you. All right. Advisement of public notices, one report. Director Elms?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. So we will be asking the planning commission for a recommendation to the city council to amend Chapter Three, Title Nine of Article 34 of the Los Banos Municipal Code related to density bonus. And this is just to be a lot more user-friendly and reader-friendly as, as you're reading that ordinance. It was written about 10 years ago, if not more, and it's very cumbersome to read, as well as laws have changed, and we need to adapt to those new state laws. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, September 11th, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. That concludes my report.
Okay. Item 13, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, it was men.
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
As mentioned during the previous item and discussion on the Pioneer Road project, we had a very productive meeting today with Caltrans staff, new district director, Dan McElheeny. And he brought along, you know, several key folks within the organization. So very productive, very productive meeting. And I went from that meeting into a meeting with Senator Kamala Harris's regional director. He happened to be passing through town, so I had kind of a meet and greet meeting with him. I think that relationship will be important going forward. We have a couple issues that we might use her assistance on. So it was an encouraging meeting, and I'll continue to meet with him on a regular basis. That's it tonight, Mayor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now, item 14, we've covered everything, I have no report. We've gone over it. Item 15, city manager, city, city council member reports. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Freya. Hang on, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight from me.
Thank you.
For once in my life.
Said enough on water, I know. Okay, Mrs. Santos.
Nothing to report tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jones?
No report.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just wanted to remind the public that we do have the grand opening of Marshals tomorrow. And I believe the public is invited to come. And it will be next to Hobby Lobbies. And I believe it starts at, is it 8:30? Eight o'clock? Eight o'clock? Eight o'clock? Okay, eight o'clock AM in the morning, so rise and shine. Also, Salute to Seniors is going to be held on September 27th at our community center. And the deadline to purchase your tickets is September 13th. So for anyone out there, especially our seniors who are interested in attending that wonderful afternoon luncheon and program, that's, not program, but the booth that will be there with information, please purchase your tickets and come and enjoy the time and fellowship. And that's about it tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We have a majority of seniors on the council now. Correct, Mr. Freya? Yep, yep, you get your senior citizen discount. Yeah, get your senior citizen discount. Okay, and just a short report. If, if possible, council members in public, September 19th, in Gustein at 3:00 PM for the MCAG meeting to help us further our Pioneer Road project, please come. And the quilt show is this weekend. And quilts of valor, quilts for veterans, they're going to be presented. Hope the council can come, it's at 9:00 AM at the, September 7th, at the arts, at the, the art center down the street here, the old Catholic church. So if you can come, we'll be presenting quilts of valor to, to veterans, and that starts at 9:00 AM. Love to see you there. Okay, so now we're going to go to item 16, public employee annual performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957, title city manager. And we've been doing this for a while, not that we have a problem with the city manager, but it's, it's goal setting. And, and this takes many meetings to do, so we come up with, with goals that the city manager in turn then works with, with staff with. So that's all that's about, there's no hidden agenda here, it's just goal setting for the city manager. And we're taking our sweet time doing it, so we do it right. And so the last thing, I, I want to go on to item 17, 5:00 PM Thursday, that's tomorrow, September 5th, 2019, in the lounge at the Los Banos Community Center located at 645 Seventh Street, Los Banos, California, to attend a code enforcement workshop. And so can I have a motion to adjourn to the, the, Mrs. Lewis, to tomorrow's meeting? Is it on? I turned you off? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make that motion to adjourn to Thursday, September 5th, at the community center for the code enforcement workshop.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos, for the adjournment to September 5th, 2019, the lounge of the Los Banos Community Center for a code enforcement workshop at 5:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. And on the closed session item, if we have anything to report, we'll do so after closed session. Thank you, and have a nice evening.